Do we have an indicator anywhere? Or where's the camera on?
Turns out we have to fill these out. So we're gonna do it as a group effort here.
Oh, alright.
Excellent.
Alright.
Unless you came with your.
I didn't. But we want to see how we did it.
Of course.
Are we alive? I did not. I did not correctly.
Okay.
I have them printed out. Yes, we're good.
President McGurty.
Okay.
Yeah, sign. There you go.
Oh, thank you. Okay, we are live. Thank you all.
You're live.
Calling this special meeting to order. We have present the North Shore School Board, Vice President David Kogan, Director Sandy Hayes, Amy Cast and Bob Swain. I am Jackie McGurty, the current president. We also have our technical advisor and current secretary Peggy King for at least a little while. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for us to review and discuss the six proposals that we received, bids for conducting our national superintendent search going forward. You all have in your packets here in front of you a paper copy of each proposal so that we have it to review and compare to each other, as well as evaluation sheets, which we had also received a while ago that I know we've all been studiously taking notes on. At the end of the meeting, I mean, the purpose of the meeting tonight is to review and discuss, but also to select those firms that we would like to move forward with for interviews at our next special meeting on November 8th. So hopefully by the end of this meeting, I would say pick three firms. And at any point in this, stop me and tell me if you disagree, and that's perfectly fine. And then at the end of the meeting, we can also then discuss questions that we will use for the interviews next week and then the format and so forth. I assume it will be very similar to what we did in April, only in just April. Okay. So with respect to the evaluation sheets, and I do apologize again, I know I've spoken to some of you already, but these evaluation sheets are part of the formal RFP process that we decided to go with. So these scoring sheets actually need to be turned back into our contracts group at the end of this. And that there is a summary that Joy Pullman, our manager of contracts, will be putting together, and that will be a public record. So we do need to fill those out and put numbers to them. I've had the discussion that a lot of the considerations and characteristics and properties of the proposals and the firms are not necessarily amenable to being identified with a number. So again, that'll be part of the discussion tonight, but we do we do need to fill out this this matrix to hand back into contracts. I had thought it might be useful, we don't need to, but to go around the table and perhaps throw out those firms that we think are the the bottom of our list and see if we agree on, you know, one or three that we, you know, don't think are making the cut.
I think that's a great plan. I'm just now actually reading the directions, and this says step two, only if it passes. What is step one?
Step one, I believe, was the checklist that the contracts group did, where they go through and look at all of the, make sure all of the attachments are present, the certifications and so forth. And that was done at the bid opening at the end of last week.
Alright, shoot. That maybe tonight was step one.
And then actually, there's a list that goes through at bid opening, and then the contracts group goes through in much more detail to make sure that everything is what it should be, you know. So yes, tonight is step two.
Alright, sorry.
For the evaluation.
No, 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 no worries. Just see, because I think that's an excellent plan.
Okay, so in a moment, let's maybe go around the table and see if we all agree on the, at least the bottom of the list, and then we can discuss the rest. Another thing I wanted to point out with respect to references, I did not call references, at least this time around. The most of these firms are known to us, particularly since most of them we reviewed and interviewed in April and were familiar with from previously. As well, I know several of us have had opportunity to discuss these, some of these same firms with other school board members in the region who have been using them. So we have gotten some really good input that are essentially references.
I would like to suggest, though, between now and next week, that the firms that we'd like to invite to interview, that we do perhaps divvy up the list and do call the references at that point. And that would be a question for our contracts department, because, you know, there's a couple lines in the summary sheet that perhaps we can best get information about. For example, timeliness of completion, meeting deadlines, that we'll really learn about that from the interview and the reference checks. So I guess we can, we can talk about that as we go. But I think it would be a good idea to do reference checks.
Absolutely.
Before next week. If we're in the same time zone as the district.
Right. Okay, any other thoughts? And I agree with that completely. My, just, you know, from my perspective, what I was thinking about in terms of reference, not references, but timelines and meeting the, what are they called, deadlines and timelines. I looked at some of their, the schedule that they put together for us and whether it meets our deadlines and timelines.
Oh, good point.
And, you know, everything that we were looking for from them, as well as just, you know, information from other districts with respect to how well they worked. But yes, we should definitely call references ahead of the interview process. And if we only pick three firms to interview, that should be an easy, easy split to make.
Great.
President McGurty, one thing I'd like to do is thank Joy and Doug.
Absolutely.
Because when we went back for this with round two, we got a nice selection of responses, and so I really appreciate that their extra effort to, on round two, that was great.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you for bringing that.
I did go back and check, the last time we did this, 2016, we had five firms. So we had six this time, so even more.
Yes, this is good. Okay. Shall we kick it off? If we want to do one round and just throw out, you know, who came out, who we would knock off the list for interviews, if you have any. And I, you know, for my, I can start it, you know, based on what I went through. I came up with numbers and scoring for each of these, as well as just, you know, other aspects of the proposals. But for myself, Human Capital and Summit were kind of at the bottom of my list. These are both, I mean, the most expensive, you know, most and second highest cost, as well as, you know, travel expenses involved would be higher. The Human Capital also was unwilling to participate in the cooperative purchasing process. Summit, Summit actually sounds like a really great company that would be really great to work with, but they have very little experience with K-12. They've got a lot of experience at the university level and nonprofit groups, but only four K-12 organizations and only one superintendent search. And for what we need and want, and, you know, for this search for North Shore, I want somebody with much more experience. So that's my initial take. Director Swain?
I had the same two that I dropped out at the bottom. I mean, for the same, basically the same reasons you mentioned. Summit was, has a great experience in executive, you know, at a university level and nonprofit. And Human Capital, you know, just had a rate, rated a little bit down compared to the rest on the rating schedule. Big piece of it was cost. Cost was kind of a hard one to gauge, because people had minimums, and then they had all these grab bag of additional services, and it was really, really hard to sit and try to compare and contrast them accurately.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't, we can do that in the, when we get, I guess we get to the interview process, we can ask those questions, I suppose.
Yes, and get more detail.
Yeah, so those were the two that I had put us out.
Director Cast?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I have to, another lens I was looking at too was in terms of support for racial and educational justice requirements that we have in there. And for that reason, in Northwest Leadership Associates, I didn't see really substantive details in that area. And so for that reason, they were at the bottom of my list.
Yeah, I agree. They were in my bottom three. Yeah, I agree. So, but Summit and Northwest.
Summit and, Summit and Human Capital.
HCE, right.
Oh, yeah, probably slightly different order than my, my thoughts so far, but it, but it, same thing, you know, the, in our, in our rating sheet, cost is rated pretty high. It's weighted, weighted pretty high. And Summit, again, like, I would love to meet them, but I, it's unfortunate that they just, their expertise is not in the K-12 sphere.
Yeah, yeah. I'd love to see them get more experience and, you know.
Right, right.
Yeah. Director Hayes?
Pretty much, did I, oh, those were the two. And I have some others that I have concerns with, that they're not insurmountable concerns. Summit, for all the reasons that have just been said, the one, the only entity in Washington State, I have concerns about that entity's ability to do community engagement and listen to the community. So that being a huge concern, I'm worried that, you know, how did they place these people? Anyway. So, and then, yeah, they just, they don't have any K-12, and if we were a smaller district and kind of wanted to take that risk, that might be fine.
Right, right.
But we're, we're in need of experts, and we're looking for pretty high quality. Human Capital, I, the timeline made me very nervous. This early December focus group meetings, when we heard them verbally say in our meeting with them that that's not really something they valued, I guess is the best way to put it. And to try to do that in early December seems concerning. To try to push through some focus groups, people are not going to be engaged. Exactly.
Yeah, yeah. They also limited the number of focus groups.
Yeah. So, so I'm in complete agreement that those two.
The two.
Yeah.
Director Kogan?
Yeah, so I enjoyed reading through the proposals, and I went through and used the rating system as provided. And when I added up the total, Summit, Human Capital were the two lowest scores that I got. So it conforts with what everybody else is saying. So that seems to make sense for me as well.
Okay. Well, that part was easy. Okay.
It was two, for sure.
So that's, that's two. Yes, and they came out of the bottom of the scoring range for me as well. From here, that we just jump in if there's any one other firm that anyone has concerns about or wants to discuss further and go from there. And, you know, for myself, and as I mentioned, Northwest Leadership is actually tied with one of the two that we just talked about in terms of the overall score that I gave them. And there are, you know, some of the same issues that Director Cast mentioned for me. There's not much, I thought, in their online presence in the company page, and the equity policy I thought was wanting that they showed there. I hadn't realized until reading through this that the resident and owner is a previous superintendent here. Has, have either of you three, I mean, this was a while ago, right?
And that's what's interesting, that was a while ago.
Yeah, yeah. I thought that would, I wasn't sure if that, that would be a positive or a negative. It was just a little different to think about that.
I think these were cited in eastern Washington for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah. And I was just thinking, it's, we are a very different district, I think, than, than when he was, was here. I did not think that the majority of the, the school districts that they have worked with were terribly similar to North Shore. Although there were some. They also had the next highest cost. So for me, these would be, if this was number six and number five, these guys would be number four for me. Director Swain?
I'll pass.
Okay.
Collecting my thoughts, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm looking through this one. I mean, I guess I'll, I'll throw out that, yeah, Northwest Leadership did have, it was kind of a canned proposal, it was pretty thin. Didn't have a lot of, some of the others went out of their way to look at our equity, racial, social justice policies, et cetera, kind of emphasized that it was, they would pay attention to that, and it was important. Others had a track record of placing a high percentage of minority folks in positions of leadership. So, yeah, it was, it was a little bit canned. I mean, I do like, I do like their, they have experience in Washington, which carries a little weight. But, yeah, there wasn't a whole lot of content as far as community engagement, what the process is. That part of it too. Others had gone into their full process of the surveying software that they use and how they go about it, step by step. So, yeah, if there was a, probably if there was a third to move aside, it would be Northwest Leadership.
Director Cast?
Yeah, nothing to add, really.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just, again, I get the heebie-jeebies is the professional term for it. That if we're voting on this on November 14th, and the 16th through the 18th is their focus group meetings, that it felt unrealistic, that that would be a really in-depth quality focus group.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Director Kogan?
I just noted, I liked their proposal, and they scored higher with me. And I put here as a plus and a minus, is their experience in Washington State. And so, you know, that's, that's a plus, if that's really what you're looking to do. If you're looking to do a national search. I didn't see as much evidence that that was in their wheelhouse, so for me, that could go either way.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so, but again, they weren't my top scorers as well, so.
Okay, okay.
So would you be okay if?
I would, I would, just because, you know, there was, like I said, some of the strengths, I still wasn't sure I really, I wasn't sure that's what we really wanted, was a Washington-focused super search. Even if it does, quote unquote, go national, all of this work is Washington, Oregon. Which is great, but again, if we want to look regional, that's one search. If we want to really go national, I just don't know if their connections would reach as far outside of the Northwest.
Right. I was just going to say, I think they did have some of the candidates came from.
Outside.
Outside, but, yeah, not very many. They listed, I like that they listed them, the candidates that they placed and their previous position that they had come from. But, yeah, most of that is also Pacific Northwest. Director Swain, you ready?
Oh, I was, I was going to agree with Director Kogan, the same kind of a, here, you know, this or that on great Washington Northwest experience. Has positives too, but at the same time, I think that's the, probably the easier part, looking around the districts that were, that were where we're at, regardless of who's looking, doing the search. Having an extended network and other contacts and other, other associates that are in different regions of the country, I think is definitely beneficial. And I think we, I think we all want to extend this nationally to find the best possible candidate, best possible mix of candidates, so. So, yeah, I had the same kind of, it's a positive, but it's a, it's a negative at the same time.
You know, and I have to say, that there was not a perfect proposal.
Yeah.
Right, which is, you know, to your point, Director Kogan, it's, it's, you know, there's, there's a lot of areas of gray that could have been a point here or a point there.
Yeah.
It helped me with thinking about questions that I wanted to ask.
Yeah, for sure.
These guys said this, what do you think of that?
Yeah, seriously.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, that might give us our three, if everyone is in agreement that Northwest Leadership would be number three to eliminate.
And we want to talk and see if we can get it down to two. I mean, if there's a clear difference or.
Sure.
Yeah, well, we should definitely discuss.
And that may help us also surface what questions we're going to want. And I'll, I'll take some notes as we're chatting about questions.
Okay.
Oh, and I thought, um, questions that we used in April somewhere in my mess. There we go. Some of these may have notes, but I brought along, does anybody need a copy of the? These are the questions that we, we had put together from last, from April for interviews of the search firms. And, you know, again, something to discuss, once we're fine, you know, we're good with cutting down the number to interview. I mean, when I was going through these, I mean, I think we're all probably looking for similar things. I mean, the strength of the firm with respect to their record for placing superintendents. I was looking for familiarity with our region, you know, schools like ours. Cost obviously is, is a factor. It swayed me a lot, if their equity statement and their work on recruiting candidates who are strong in racial and educational justice, that was, that was upfront, you know, first consideration. If it was really strong, then that was a really strong score for me. Other thoughts? I should, I should shout for the others.
It's kind of, you know, we use GR for the interim, right? So we kind of have a personal experience with the work they did, which I was happy with. And I think they did a good job, and they really understood, after talking to all of us individually, of what we really were looking for in candidates. So, you know, they have a little bit, advantage a little bit. I mean, the proposal's a little thin, as far as descriptiveness and process. That probably would have scored them a lot lower if we hadn't used them before and experienced their capabilities. So I'll just leave that where it is. But, so the other two are definitely, so McPherson and Hazard Young, that's how you associate. Definitely the thicker proposal is very specific about how they're going to go about doing things. Their scheduling is very specific, and their national reach and their, just their track record is pretty thorough. I mean, it's hard to argue that they're not thorough and well-experienced firms, so.
I agree.
But I'll leave that open, so whatever, whatever you folks think about it too. I'm not really set on two, but I can be convinced of that too, at the same time.
I just.
Yeah?
Quite just saying, you know, again, for me, there were, now we're at the point where, you know, that's, you know, what, different strengths amongst these three that in some ways offset each other. So I don't have a clear two at the top, to be honest.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, I think a lot of my questions are going to be around process, which, you know, unless you want to write a book, you can't get 100% of it in there anyways.
Yeah, true.
You know, I do, although there were, some were more detailed than others. So, yeah, I don't, I don't have, if the question is, is there another one, I would set aside. I don't think I have a clear answer to that right now.
I agree. Director Hayes?
Um, I guess my, I liked the proposal with McPherson. And, but again, I mean, it, our consultants would be two sitting superintendents of large districts, and I'm on my third superintendent. Not one of them would have had an extra hour to be a consultant for another district doing a superintendent search, so.
Yeah.
I'm worried.
It is puzzling.
Right, how they're, and, and maybe that's just one of the questions, on how on earth are you finding the time without taking away from the students in your own district, right?
Which two is it? I know it's Ivan.
Ivan and Gustav. It's a sitting superintendent in Beaufort.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a good pondering. I mean, if I had to guess, it's, they're tailoring the proposal to the region, so. If we were in Tennessee, then those two probably wouldn't have been on it, it would have been two superintendents in Tennessee, potentially, you know, it's because they know that the local network, and they can call all the superintendents, and they'll pick the phone up.
Yeah, so to me, it's the question. That's the question of how are you, on earth are you doing this?
Yeah.
I don't know any.
Although.
There's three jobs for one of them.
Right.
To present, so it's not just two, superintendent consultant. There's also chief academic and recovery officer for another school district. So it's, it does feel like.
I see, huh.
Like that's a lot going on.
It is puzzling.
Yeah, and I am not so worried that we would suffer, but I don't like the idea that the students of that district would, their focus would be taken away. Yeah.
I guess if tables return, it would not be my expectation that my superintendent would be consulting in that way.
Well, it does, to me, it also begs the question of how focused are they going to be on the details of North Shore and what we need, while still doing a good job in their home district. I will say, in looking at a lot of the consultants in all of these companies, there is overlap. So there are some who work for multiple consulting companies, and there are also individuals who joined these consulting firms while they were still sitting superintendent. So I think that's not unusual, not necessarily, you know, to our benefit, if, if they're doing that. The other thing about McPherson is that they actually do have quite a few consultants who are based in Washington. Who are not on our team, or on the proposed team, anyway.
No, but you, that's through website research.
Pardon?
Through website research?
Yeah.
Yeah. And again, that's why I'm struggling with this data thing, because it's not matching some of the criteria, and it's not a lot of school districts, but some of the placements, I am aware, were not great placements with McPherson, that they then struggled. So, and I don't know, you know, whether that's a board, you know, because of the board, or how that.
Yeah, it's hard to say, right?
Went down, but it does make me a little nervous. Whereas, like, Human Capital, the references got amazing, people really pleased with who we have, and so.
I think HYA too.
Yes, HYA had.
Or not Human, yes, HYA, that's right. Sorry, I'm going to get the H's confused.
Yeah, there were some really, really positive comments about experience with HYA.
And we had great success with GR.
Yes, we have, absolutely.
Twice now, so.
We're not bringing them up as much, because we know them pretty well already, and that's fine. Yeah, there were a few, just, you know, minor detail kind of things on the proposal that I thought were a little odd with McPherson also, that just.
I do not, on McPherson too, and I mean, they have a thick proposal, so that's why I don't like talking in absolutes. But again, not, not a lot of emphasis on, on equity, that I, that was one of my notes.
Yeah.
One of my notes too, it's nitpicky, but it just caught my attention, was they had a couple of statements that were repeated multiple times throughout the proposal, about the retention rate. It was like in their three or four different sections. And it just made me wonder, does anybody really look at this proofread holistically and say, we've already said this, or does it need to be repeated multiple times? And just wondering if the attention to detail, it didn't jump off the page like, wow, this is really polished. It was like, did somebody read the whole thing at once? Like the customers are.
Am I hearing that we are eliminating McPherson from the interview list, or?
I can go either way. It's just, it's definitely a question I'm going to. I can go either way. It's just it's definitely a question I'm going to want to ask of
Oh, yeah, if we interview them.
balancing all of your.
Because people have a complicated search.
I mean, they're huge. They have gazillion consultants at their their beck and call.
Well, I mean, yeah, this is 130 consultants across the country. I guess one thing we could do in the interview process is ask them if they'd be willing to, you know, put different leads on our on the team because we have concerns of conflict of interest or just time and like, as you mentioned, you know, these are people with more than full-time jobs already. And who's going to really be doing all the work? I mean, they're more than welcome. I was expecting after you kind of explained it like, oh, yeah, they are the kind of the lead. So how do they overcome that or can they do something different? I guess on that point, is there anything? What did you all see as like really positive about the firm? One thing I saw I thought was it just that the size of it, the consultant reach across the country, that type of thing. I thought that was a big positive. Is there anything in the is there anything in their past jobs with other school districts in Washington that jumped out at you as good or bad?
They they were one of the proposals that, again, and this is, we didn't get books, we got snippets. They were one of the proposals that talked in depth about not only doing focus groups when creating the criteria for the superintendent posting, but also doing doing public engagement with the finalists. Right? And that's another question we're going to have to ask. Like we, you know, in terms of the culture in North Shore, having having the finalists engage with the public before an offer is made by the board is something that is a big match for our community. And McPherson's, they talked about that with some detail. So that that for me, that was a plus. Yeah.
And some of the districts that they've worked with and hired for or, you know, did the search for Kent, Vancouver, Issaquah. At least they have familiarity with districts right in our region and, you know, similar size. I don't know. Actually, I don't recall now which Kent search.
It would be their current.
The current, okay.
So I scored those guys really high in equity. They had a there's a section in here where they talk about this. Every decision we make will be committed to the following fundamental beliefs, page 30. And they list the seven items and many of those resonated with me. They really had good alignment with us, so they scored high. I'm not reading for that.
Oh, they're in it. Thank you. Yeah, it's.
Kind of interesting that it's a non-discrimination policy as opposed to an equity policy. I mean, it's just, you know, semantics, but just sort of.
Yeah. No, it was good. You know, their process is very thoroughly embedded, especially the stakeholder involvement. I mean, they were the the top three. They were, you know, my top three are very close. They were the third. You know, on the list of three, but
Yeah, me, too.
They're in the nineties. So, yeah, I would I'd be fine having them and interviewing them and asking the questions I would have.
I think it would be useful for us, if only as a point of reference to the for the other two, but yeah.
We did just work with them in April. They were on our finalist list.
We did interview them.
Yeah, we did interview them. That's true. Yeah. Also, do we then want, are we are we going to interview three firms then in a week? Is that what we're thinking about here?
I think so.
I think so.
Good with that.
I mean, like Director Swain said, the for me also, these three came, you know, were at the top and all in the the nineties in terms of a score. So relatively close.
Pretty close, I think. So we can still think about it, though.
For me, McPherson scored four out of my top. So for me, I feel like if they're in the top three, that's great. If they fall out, we do two. You know, it wasn't that close to where I'd go. I'm missing that opportunity. But I could go either way, really.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm with you, David. I'm trying to picture what answer they would give to my question of how on earth are you doing all these jobs with a high quality in a way where I feel like, oh, okay.
That was that was a hesitation during the interim process, too.
We will get their full attention.
Your point, if we don't interview them, I'm not feeling like, gosh, maybe they maybe they were the one or I can go either way.
Yeah, I could, too. It is. It is asking them to re kind of reevaluate and resubmit how their team is put together because we're going to kind of tell them this doesn't work for us the way they got it structured, I think.
Which is very different than asking someone to evaluate a process.
Yeah, yeah. Because it didn't make it clear that, you know, who's really doing the work. As if five other consultants that are retired that are kind of doing most of the work and these people are just there to vet the regional opportunities that really say, so they were the lead, so. It is organization. I'm assuming it's not just three people doing all the work, but I, yeah, I could I could go either way, too, honestly. We did ask for these to be very clear and not have, we shouldn't have too many questions if you're really being thorough in your response.
Yeah, I think that's part of the the discussion next week, you know, how who's who is doing this? Who's I can't find it now. The the lead.
Well, so let's look at the wording.
Dr. Nelson, who is the first on the list.
Because to me, that seems really fundamental.
Yeah.
You know, that's that was again, something I was, yeah, consultants. That was something I was thinking about going through, you know, what what is foundational to their experience and expertise as opposed to talking about it, you know?
Yeah. When I I guess what I had thought from, you know, just looking at the team, there's the person who's at the top. In this case, it would be Dr. Nelson, who would be Jim Hager's corollary with experience with GR. And then, you know, consultant, other consultants on the team, which would be Estavo and Ivan.
Yeah, we had that great experience with GR that we had a full-time person that could be available at any time during the day. Right? To work with our schedules and our Zoom calls or in-person meetings, which is probably one of the most important pieces, just really starting, right? I'm not expecting these three full-time superintendents to like leave their school district for three or four hours to come hang out. So I don't know. Maybe it's all after hours. I
Thing two is they list four consultants. The first three have their resumes attached and then the fourth one doesn't have a resume attached. And then that gentleman's the one where all the letters of reference speak to Dr. Lauder as what a great job he did. So I wonder if, kind of to your point, there's some folks kind of spearheading the project and then Dr. Lauder is the person that's actually working with the district and district staff and the board to really do the work. But it was just curious that I didn't see the resume.
Right.
Interesting.
Right.
Well, I mean, he listed as advisor.
Yeah, I was going to point that out, too.
Dr. Nelson, Dr. Valderras.
Also, is that fundamental enough to to
It's not in the resume.
Effects.
Personally, I'd like to see somebody focus on our need and not do it as a just like a side job, you know, and maybe I just don't know how you can do it, you know?
Right.
Especially if we want to do, I mean, we did that community engagement last time, you know, in 2016, we had a lot of groups and that's a lot to coordinate and manage and execute. And I just I just want to see it done with great attention to detail and done well, you know, and.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I have to agree. I don't and I don't, you know, I agree. Perhaps we are looking at two for next week.
Yeah, for me, it also speaks to their personal values, right? Again, I can't imagine any of the three superintendents that I've worked with saying, yeah, I want this side gig. And it felt like the job was a 24/7 and I don't know when they would have been able to do something else and yeah, that I it seems like when you take on a superintendent job, especially of a large district, be one of that was a 800 student, maybe, but these are big districts and I just, I don't see how they because there is no off-hours.
There's no off-hours.
There are no extras.
There should not be.
No extra hours.
Yeah, we, you know, we've all gotten the emails and the texts and phone calls.
The 1:00 AM, yeah.
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 Okay.
You know, is he giving up going to concerts or sporting events to do this? And that concerns me, right? Because that's not, we're going to expect the next superintend. They're following some pretty big
Yeah.
examples of full-time commitment.
Yeah, I think our, yeah, you're right. Our expectation is pretty high. Fill the shoes of people that have been in the job. And, um, yeah, it's it's going to be more than, obviously, they're not going to have time to do the digging. So it's going to be either either they've got other consultants they haven't mentioned or it's all it's all internet-based advertising and then they call it from there.
Which doesn't seem to me an effective practice, refining really the gems, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Unless they have, I mean, they have a pretty extensive network, consultants all over the country. It could be that they plug into that
And again, if they say that, yeah, they're just they're just figureheads and real work isn't getting done. Fine. But again, I'm still concerned about
Yeah, yeah.
a practice of, especially the one that's got the other, how are they doing the RIN? That was a great catch.
Yeah.
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 Could be a typo on the resume, but the way it's printed, it's it's three busy jobs.
Yeah.
At least two.
Yeah, that's an important job with doing the RIN and yikes, anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's my concern again.
And I think it's fair.
It's again, just different needs, you know, not every community is in the same place, you know? Maybe what what folks are looking for, you know, they find a perfect fit, but, you know, I just think the amount of community involvement that we've had in the past, I see the need only growing since 2016, not shrinking. So I just feel like that's got to be executed well. You know, I mean, so much talk about student voice, you know, how do we get that done? And, you know, some proposals talked about, oh, we're going to have after-school times. I really like that. And they thought through the student voice part. But if people haven't thought through the student voice part, that's going to be another thing that's going to be really critical for the success of this project.
Okay, I'll spit that down. That's one of our questions.
Yeah. Well, let's take a poll. Interview McPherson or not?
I'm leaning towards no.
Trying not to let the fact that I'm going to be doing this while I'm out of town sway me.
I know you well enough. It's not going to sway you.
On one hand, I can see giving the benefit of the doubt to re-explain. On the other hand, it's such a fundamental, straightforward kind of a, shouldn't be that difficult, you know? It's almost like asking them to re, it's not, it's not asking them to resubmit, but it's it's asking them to rethink their approach, which we shouldn't have to ask them to do that. You know, you see what I'm saying? So I could go kind of either way.
Unless they can completely assure us and we walk away completely assured that we will have their full attention, whoever is is involved in it. Director Cogan?
You know, I would, I think always choice is a good thing, right? So I always tend to lean towards, you know, well, what if there's something that comes out of the conversation that's really compelling? But the fact that we spoke with these folks six months ago makes me feel like there's less of a worry that we'll miss something. We had an opportunity to work with them in in April and chose GR. So I kind of feel like if they if we don't reconnect with these folks after looking at this proposal, I don't think I feel like I'm missing out.
Okay.
Just let David speak first.
Because it's true. I mean, I mean, choice is important, but not to the point of of doing it just for the sake of doing it, not adding value.
Using time without added value. Okay, so I'm hearing interview two firms, GR recruiting and HYA.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, that was easy. It was kind of. It's not quite 6 o'clock. The, I mean, we do
Do we want to talk about?
Let's talk about questions.
Let's talk about questions and let's talk about divvying up references.
Yes, okay, okay. And we all have sheets to fill out. We don't need to do that necessarily tonight, but we do need to get them filled out and sent back in for Joy.
You know, yeah, if we could clarify.
Do you know if she needs all of all of the pages or?
I believe she needs all of them because are there different sections?
Right.
Well, the extra pages are the same scores that go in here.
I think they feed it all together. Yeah.
It's kind of a guide.
I think it's a guide. I agree. It's a guide.
Okay, so we don't necessarily have to have them all filled out tonight, but if everyone can get them filled out and get them back.
Yeah, and if there's a deadline, Peggy, if you can let us know, we'll run them run them on back. Yeah.
I mean, it's not, my understanding is that it becomes public record, but it's not going to be posted anywhere. But and she will take it all and there is a matrix that she puts together based on all five of us, you know, each for each each firm. Okay, so questions?
I just just to this because here's here's my concern with this. I had things where they got lower, but they were non-negotiable. Like like Summit probably got a decent amount of points, but there was a non-negotiable moment. But it's only in one category. So it's challenging with this type of rubric where there's no real opportunity for the nuance and the
Yes.
quality component, not just quantity. So I don't I don't know how to communicate that. Somebody does a public records request like, well, you scored me.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there was this one square where
Yeah, and I had that conversation with Joy.
Okay, I mean, I'll just turn it in.
I mean, one thing I thought we could do is each of us indicate somehow our highest priority, non-negotiable categories, which which affect the the overall outcome.
Yeah, I mean, I had, if it's helpful, I mean, I had scored these today, earlier today, after reading through them the last couple of days. But some of my some of my scores have changed after our discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Right.
And I would add the top two point-getters in my tally are the folks we're interviewing. So I feel like it did.
Yeah, same word.
Yeah, and and really, that's that's kind of the bottom line, I think. As Joy explained, usually if you fill these out, it becomes pretty clear, you know, who's rising to the top and it's at our discretion, you know, as to how many to interview and yeah, what it's based on. But yes, we had that discussion about the fact that many of the considerations and the things that are important to us about about, you know, the relationship we will have with this firm, you can't put a number on necessarily. I mean, you can assign one, but it doesn't have a whole lot of meaning to it. So we've had that discussion, but again, this is part of the formal RFP process, so we we are required to do it. As you say, our top scores are.
It was helpful to frame my evaluation of the proposals.
Right, a way to compare them to each other.
Yeah, it kind of forces you to. Yeah, it kind of forces you to make an apples-to-apples comparison with certain topics brought forward versus all the stuff that you could think, well, I like this, or this was stronger here. So I thought the rubric was helpful.
I agree, a hundred percent.
I guess my issue is, is the point totals, because the cost outweighed quality of staffing, racial and educational justice. And for us, I mean, unless somebody was going to come with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar proposal, it really, that was, it was, they were going to be too close for it to really drive a difference. And so it was hard with the ten pointers to really drive the difference when the cost is the biggest point value in this scenario. And I totally get that there are other proposals that we put out where that actually is very, very important. But for this conversation, it was just a challenge for me. And I'm just saying this, so it's for the record, if anybody messes it up, I'm not.
Yeah.
Maybe I can add for the record, I too felt like, wow, that's a real forced scale. And like, is the difference of three points for cost making cost the most important factor in the, the rubric? And so I was concerned about that. So I went back and I changed the rubric, which I know you're not supposed to do. But I said, okay, twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-three, and I just did a point less for the cost.
Okay.
And my top six order didn't change. So that made me feel okay. So even though it was weighted heavily towards cost, the way that the pricing was and the other factors, it didn't change in order. So then I was like, okay.
Okay.
I didn't feel comfortable. I don't know if anybody else would be that.
I did the same thing. I did the exact same thing, because I knew it was weighted too high.
Yeah. See, I, I did a, a different experiment in weighting it even more so, because, you know, okay, I need a difference. We need, I would have written one, two, three, four, five, okay, you know, in, in, in order. Six, yeah, because you have a zero in the twenty-five, right? And that, make, it, again, this, my same top three came out, you know, it, the order is essentially the same. But it, it, yeah, whether, I mean, we, we don't wait, I think, this board doesn't wait cost as high as what normal contracts and bids are, are focused on.
Right. And, and again, for anybody watching or collecting this later to watch, it's not that we don't recognize the importance of being good fiscal stewards. It's just the fraction that this is of our total budget and the, the difference.
The impact.
Right, between the six different proposals with municipal schools. So it, when it came to rating them, it wasn't a huge impact. If there had been one where it was a very large cost, then it absolutely would have.
Yeah.
Anyway, so that's, I'm, I'm stopping now. Just got that recorded.
As you said, the, the other qualities and qualifications of the firm and the quality of the candidates that they will bring to us, I don't think has a whole lot to do with, with the cost. And for those small differences in, in the cost bids, um, you know, it, the, the excellence of the candidates is far, far more important than that kind of cost. Okay, questions for interviews?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we can, what I had thought was perhaps we can take the ones that we had for the interim and, you know, go back and, you know, add other things, take things out. For example, we've talked about student voice and how to include.
The first two we don't need to do, is that?
Oh, yes, yes.
The experience, yeah. Do you have a copy of this, Dave?
I don't.
I'm sorry, I only had three.
No, that's a cookie.
Print out more.
Can I get your copy? I can copy it.
Could you actually make two copies?
Thank you so much. If you don't mind, then I can notes.
I grabbed the copies that I had and ran out the doors.
I'd like, I'd like your member to bring some copies.
I think, I think we have it electronically somewhere, but I don't think I can.
You know, but while, while we're waiting, should we talk about reference calls?
Yes, sure.
Let's do that. So I don't mind, since I brought it up, I will say I don't mind making some. I don't know, and we're not allowed to do it from different time zones.
What?
I'm thinking that's not very effective if someone is not in the same time zone that.
Ah, yes. And when, when does this person leave for the other time?
Tomorrow, seven AM.
So.
Well, there's only like six total.
There's only six.
Right.
I think we can excuse Director Hayes.
I think we.
I think we, we need to excuse Director Hayes.
So the, the, what we're thinking is who they give list as references, we're not going to call some of the others?
Some of the other clients, or?
Yeah, sure.
We could.
I don't know. I have just.
So each provided three references.
We've all talked with so many boards about these.
I know, right.
Different ones.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's references and there's past clients.
Right.
Right.
Oh, we've got one in Virginia for GR, and Edmonds and Shore.
You know, I do have a, Bob needs a copy.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
References here, the rep, okay, so.
You want to just assign them?
Yeah, we can do, maybe give Jackie a break, since she's doing so much as president.
That's a good idea.
That'd be nice. So we can each, do we have time to each take two?
Yes, I'd love to for sure, happy to.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I say, I know I've already spoken to some of these guys about it, but this is, this is good.
Yeah, this is helpful. So, um, I don't, I don't know, how do you want it to be of that?
I'm chuckling, is Fairfax on?
Riverview and Highline.
Is it? Who wants to call them?
Yes.
Not, it is not on here. Montgomery is.
Call the superintendent there and find out how they.
Yeah, what do you think? How does that search process work out for you? Montgomery County, not Fairfax, yeah.
Um, for what it's worth, I did talk to Dr. Katims just the other night, and we talked specifically about, about search firms. And she gave a glowing recommendation, and you're welcome to call her again.
Well, we can, we don't need to.
No, twice, yeah. If you're happy with the conversation.
I'm sure she's happy to talk about it, but, you know.
Okay, here's an interesting thing. The search firm that one district used very recently to hire the superintendent, that is, the consultant is not the same search firm. Just saying.
Seems that.
I think we have a little to learn about some of the.
Yeah, this is an interesting world out there.
Yes.
So.
Incestuous, I think.
I wasn't going to use that word, goodness, just hope those three said it better.
Sorry.
How about, I'll call the superintendent at, or I'll call the board president at Edmonds, unless you want to.
Well, and that's the person that Jackie checked.
Oh, that is. Oh, sorry.
So what about Shore? Do you want to call Shoreline?
Really, you want to talk to her again?
I'll call Shoreline.
That was a couple of years ago, too, which might be a nice perspective.
And that's, they have a lovely superintendent.
Okay, I'll do Shoreline, and then one other. I can do Sue Caffs, unless someone knows her personally. You guys probably all do.
It might be good if you talk to two people about the same firm and get a, a person getting two perspectives.
Oh, yeah.
That's not bad.
That's true. That's a good point.
We're doing two each?
We can do two each.
Yeah, six total.
Two, two, and one, does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do the two remaining for GR.
And then how do you want to split up, um?
You guys split up those.
HYA.
I can do two, so do you want to pick one?
Well, I know, I know Lori Oviad at Riverview, so why don't I take her?
Okay. If you want to call it past client, feel free.
Right.
If there's a.
I'll do Highline and Monroe.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll look, maybe I'll find another from the past.
They also got very lovely point hitters. They didn't reach out with those three districts.
Yeah, I see, I think so.
Yes.
And then also did, um, yeah. Okay, there we go.
So is there a time that we want to have these calls made by to discuss it? Is it before interviews?
Well, just so we can, because will that weigh in? Well, it will, probably will weigh in in our conversation at the end of the interviews, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we should. Yeah, if people are available, people are available, we'll get that information by next meeting.
Is it at all appropriate to reach out to people if, if we know people at any other districts where?
Well, I think, that's the beauty of relationships.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's, it's appropriate. Trying to think here.
I love the way HYA has their search history.
By size.
By size.
And year.
And year, yeah, with references. I mean, this is, this is part of it, too. Assume that they have the name and phone number of people, that we are free to contact them.
Yeah, and this is with references at the top, so.
Yeah.
Could be a fun conversations, just reach out and see how their experience was.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, the Seattle one is, is he still on their board? Oh, it's the other guy that I thought, I think he's still there.
The Seattle?
The person they listed.
Conference list, yeah, the contact listing.
I think he's still on their board. They've had quite a bit of turnover.
We do have a choice. We probably want to call a search that was done more recently.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
In a better memory of.
Well, that one's twenty, that's the most recent one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Right.
Uh, but Highline would be a really good one to reach out.
I think it's tabular by year and size. Wow.
Paige and I of GR Recruiting also has a list of similar-sized projects with reference names and phone numbers.
Yeah, we don't like the Seattle school district, but Paige for the Board of Directors.
Yeah, the other thing about GR, it looks like we get the, um, the principals involved in our project this time around, too. Gary and Ryan Ray.
I have a question for you. Talking about questions, anyway, as we're doing this. Since we, we didn't have time to really go for interim, but how did, did you work in when you hired Dr. Reed? How'd you, how'd you weave in interviewing, surveying staff and admin? How did that, did it occur, and how, how, how was that handled?
It did, it did occur, actually. That was one of the focus groups. I mean, and there was, I think, a staff-specific survey, wasn't there?
There was, and then.
It was very conscious.
Regular meetings with all of the different heads of unions. Now, we had a much shorter timeframe, so, but, yeah, I think Amy was speaking with them.
Well, I was emailing them like every step of the way, just providing updates and then offering. So I think each, there were two groups that asked to meet in person to get, to have conversations about it. But, um, I think they appreciated just the updates and what was, what was going on.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because we will be looking to schedule some meetings. I mean, I will, I will attend with the, the labor organizations, but I'd like one other person to attend, so to be reaching out for that, to schedule some meetings. And as you say, once, once we have actually something going on, make sure we're keeping them all informed as we go. But, but, yeah, the stakeholder groups and focus groups, that's, that's critical. We have that list that you all used in twenty sixteen, like seventy.
And it's even bigger now.
Some odd, yeah.
I think we need the, kind of the, the up-to-date one from communications.
Yeah, yeah.
It's much broader than it was six years ago.
So that's another thing to put to, you know, during the interviews, you know, how will you approach this? You know, if we've got eighty focus groups, you know, is that doable? How would you, how would you approach that?
Uh, I don't think we say, is that doable? Because I think, I think I heard that we're all in agreement that, this is November, we've got the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we're setting our superintendent up for success, so the community is saying, yes, that's who we chose.
Was it eighty a number, or is that just a?
Oh, that was just a guess, based on, it was like, was it seventy-two or seventy-six last time?
Yeah.
And assuming we've added some.
Well, and that didn't include students, so.
It will definitely be.
Oh, yeah, definitely students.
It would be good, also, besides labor and, um, talk about which, which are all groups? Do we want board presence with the firm?
Well, last time there was no board presence.
Or is that, yeah, either, I mean, some might, some might not.
Change the conversation.
Yeah, it changes the dynamic in the room if we're, if we're there.
We get lobbied.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could see that. I could just see some groups, like, which, some will want to make sure that we're hearing the message directly rather than being filtered through.
And then, so that's why, that's, that's why we set up separate meetings.
Gotcha, okay.
That's what Jackie was talking about, yeah.
So there'll be, okay.
But we also want to make sure everyone feels that they have the same access to their information getting to us, that's, that's anything.
And the last time, we actually got quotes, like, people typed in on a survey on a website, and we got the printout.
Okay, that's really good.
Hundreds of pages of quotes we had to read.
Gotcha, okay, that's great.
And we had a whole section that was in Spanish, if you remember.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, I'm so glad you're here and you have that memory.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was interesting to see the process. It really was broad and deep and well-done.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, again, on the other end of the process, having the conversation upfront about, about, once the board narrows down finalists, then what the final selection process looks like. Because, you know, it's understandable that the last couple of years have been very tumultuous, and that's impacted some superintendent searches around the country. And yet, I think we have an expectation in our community that they will meet finalists before the board votes. So I think we're, and that may mean a trade-off in pool size. I mean, I think it's something, it's a, it's a conversation for us to have. Um, and we can decide if that's a trade-off we want to make, but I think we ask it at this stage.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, as we're evaluating firms and, you know, their ability to work with that.
Now, in twenty sixteen, was there a community interview with candidates? It was, okay.
There were, there were.
The finalists.
The finalists.
The finalists, yes, exactly.
Everyone was confidential until that point.
Right, right.
So, yeah, there were school tours, and there were, you know, kind of regional tours. So people, because of people, everyone was out of town, of course, right? So to kind of see the region and, you know, where you would be living, and then town halls in the boardroom, where the, um, community members and staff members came to, and students came to, could write down questions on cards and get them handed off to the candidates.
Perfect.
Yeah.
And I'm really looking forward to this.
I, I do, and to, to our point earlier, we were there and kind of standing in the background, and people were turning to us saying, I want.
Right. And it was a little, because heaven forbid we, we said that wasn't our decision, right?
Right, right.
Turned out it was, but, but what if it wasn't? And so we actually had to negotiate with the search firm to be in the room. So I wonder if we couldn't livestream or something, so that way we can hear it and watch it. And so, because it was, I mean, I remember who turned around and pointed to you.
I want that one.
It was impossible, it was no longer with us, but it was impossible, so it could have been, it could have been tricky.
Yeah, but, yeah. That's a good idea, though, about having it livestreamed so that we can, you know, I mean, we can even, well, we can't really sit in a room together, I suppose, but so that we can watch it while.
Well, it'll be a public meeting. Yeah, yeah.
Not, yeah, let the community ask some questions.
Yeah.
Watching our faces.
Is the time for poker faces, I guess, right?
Wear your mask.
Wear your mask.
Well, there you go, wear your mask.
It, it is a exhausting but very fun process, that you, you move to a forward-thinking.
Yeah, yeah.
Way of operating, which is great, sort of the how to solve the current crisis.
Right, yeah.
Is there, um, for you, for those of you that were here, um, is there, would you go, are there some things you do differently? Based on your past experience, like, that you didn't, like, oh, we should have done that, or?
I like having more time.
More time, probably the biggest thing, okay.
Not really a choice, but.
Yeah, no, it's a luxury, it feels like.
Yeah, we, um, we, it took us a little bit, but we learned to start asking people that were coming from out of state. Because the national search is great, but Western Washington, if you're not from here, can be a challenge. And so we did learn to start asking. It took us a little while to be like, so, where do we thought through? Put it down and. Put it down, and, and is your spouse on board with this plan? And, 'cause we did get some answers, we were like.
Really?
Yeah.
It was kinda, yeah.
Somebody wanted to go hunting, fishing.
Well, at the same time, yeah, yeah, there were, there were some interesting, there were some interesting dynamics, 'cause we are, I mean, we're not just ethnically and culturally diverse, we're geographically diverse, we're financially, economically diverse, like, there's lots of plates in the air, so that did take us a while to figure out, yeah.
One thing that I would add, in after reflection and then reading these proposals and some of the things they highlighted, one of them talked a lot about having the candidate finalist come visit, take a tour, and have their significant other, their spouse come. And there was a suggestion of like, have a board dinner with the spouse and the finalist, and we didn't do that last time and for a variety of reasons, but I just wonder, I was thinking like, oh, that would be nice, is to really have the spouse feel part of the process and feel part of the welcoming of the community and not just be kind of an and other, or a significant other, just as a add-on to this. So that's where I thought, oh, that would be kind of nice to do that, 'cause they're taking a tour of the district if they don't know this area.
Right.
With staff.
'Cause that, that can be a dryer for longevity. If spouses aren't happy, they don't stay very long.
That's a good point. Family is absolutely critical to their success, if they're with you.
Especially if they don't live here, like to your point in sense.
Oh, the weather.
We're interesting.
There's a lot of different places. This is just one of the different places. Phoenix is different.
Right, it would be a culture shock for me to live through the Southwest.
Yeah, if you're from here. It's, there's too much sun. A lot more sun, but not this much sun.
I mean, Nerf East, yeah.
Yeah, so, and it, just, I'm sorry, one last thing that we did realize as we got into it, and it worked very well, because this did not happen in previous superintendent search, was that nobody moved forward if even one board member couldn't support them. That, yeah, and we had enough quality candidates that it wasn't an issue, but it just, we didn't want to have a, a split vote.
Right.
Where somebody was like, no, we can't work with that person, so.
Yeah.
It didn't become an issue, but it just kind of helps.
Yeah, that's a good point.
To make sure that everybody had full, was gonna have full board support.
'Cause we will all need to work with this person.
Right.
Good point.
That's a good point.
Okay.
So I'm wondering if with questions, if you want to try editing them, and then we can send comments, maybe Peggy can help get them out, and then we can send thoughts of, so I think they are pretty close.
They are, they are. So I was going to offer, you know, I can, you know, based on our discussion tonight, you know, cut this down and, and add in what we've talked about, and then have that sent out to everybody. Or if you'd rather, you can all, you know, add your own comments to it, and then Peggy can send it to me, and I can collate and edit and send back out that way, whichever way you would prefer.
So the first year support, was that something we asked in twenty sixteen? What, where did that kind of question come from?
First year support.
Which one?
The first year support question.
Oh, first year, oh, here.
Oh. That was included in, in quite a few of the proposals where, for the first year, they would support us and, you know, do a.
Oh, so it's the firm.
The firm, yeah.
I think that might be more relevant with smaller districts.
True, true. Yes, some of them offered that, it was our option to have them, you know, instruct us in how to build a relationship with a superintendent
I guess we'd wanna clarify, what does first year support look like?
Yeah.
Particularly would make sense, I guess, if it's somebody new to being a superintendent.
Yeah.
Rights, right.
Yeah.
Which could be.
Neil, that may be really helpful, if you have a board that's relatively new to the work, it's like, oh, how do we pick a superintendent? How do we work with a superintendent, a new superintendent? So, I think, you know, with policy governance and the way things are going, I don't know that we need a search firm to help us as much. We've got that stuff kind of really well worked out.
And how to set the superintendent's goals for that first year, I think, I think we can do that.
One of the questions that jumped out for me is how the different firms describe advertising versus recruiting.
Yes.
Yes.
And I, we experienced that in our own experience, where we advertised and, you know, didn't get as many.
Hmm, that's true.
And then we recruited and we got, you know, three times the response.
Right.
So I think that's one of the questions I really wanna tease out, because different people had different approaches. Some had felt like you're gonna be on a website with lots of hits, and I was like, okay. That's a passive way, really, of trying to find people, and then other people are talking about really mining for candidates that are not looking.
Yeah, exactly, and it was called out specifically that way, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, too. I, but, you know, in a perfect world, they would do both, right? Have all the advertisements in all the appropriate places, and then also reach out to candidates who could be really well qualified and might be, you know, interested if somebody asked them about it.
But is the reach out just like a blast-all email to all your peers in your search firm? Hey, anybody know anybody?
Yeah.
To Washington?
Yeah.
And then it's like, no, you know, we really need more than just, I see more, more active recruiting if possible.
Compared to how to phrase this question, given what we saw this past year of a number of neighboring districts hiring first-time superintendents, I guess I wouldn't want to be able to set the expectations. Um, so knowing what's the likelihood that we could get a sitting superintendent, you know, high-quality sitting superintendent to come here, or are we, do you anticipate that we'll be looking more at assistant superintendents applying?
Yeah.
So that we can prepare staff and community that that's what we're gonna be.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that's good.
I think we had the discussion with GR in the spring about what is your view of the field? How is it looking? Are people looking to, and not just retire, you know, out of it completely, but, yeah. So an assessment of the potential candidate field.
Yeah, kind of goes to David's point too, recruiting versus marketing, 'cause most people aren't letting people know that they hate their job and they're looking to go somewhere else, right? It's not usually broadcast.
Unless they're really ready to leave.
Unless they're really ready to leave, so it really is hitting people up directly, personal phone calls, 'cause most superintendents aren't, probably don't have a lot of time to look at Indeed during the day and see who's hiring. Some, some do, I'm sure. If they're ready, if they're ready, they're ready.
Work with a few.
Yeah, yeah, but you wanna make sure we, yeah, maybe try to find someone that might, yeah, might not be particularly looking.
Okay. Okay, so I will take a whack at putting all this together and sending it back out, and if there's anything that's currently on here that I'm not sure we wanna just do away with, I'll just leave it on and get it to you guys through Peggy, and we'll, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Peggy.
Quick turnaround.
It's really gonna be a busy year for you.
So we're meeting again, um, next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, three o'clock.
Thing I just wanted to add too is I'm curious about the breakdown between electronic interaction with the community and in-person meetings, because, you know, when we did the interim superintendent, we got some clarity about the process, and I'm just curious at this moment, or, you know, how the other firm would deal with some of those, because there's advantage, I think, to both.
Yeah.
And how do we maximize, you know, efficiency in operations? And how they decide to break that down, I'd be curious.
Okay. Alrighty, so I think we have three, and we're set aside on Tuesday for interviews? We have four.
Right.
Oh, yeah, depending on how many.
Oh, yeah, we will need an hour for discussion, probably.
Right, so we'll, you know, once we have our sheets all turned in, presumably HR will notify the, the firms with respect to, you know, we need you here for an interview and thank you, but, no. And so how much time do we want for each firm to make their presentation and Q and A?
Forty-five minutes?
One hour?
Forty-five minutes, I think, and then we can chat afterwards, right?
Yeah, we did forty-five minutes last time, and then fifteen minutes, and then it was our speed dating kind of.
Yeah, usually we're, we didn't run over, I don't think, so it was forty-five, and then fifteen.
And then fifteen for us to discuss.
To discuss after they've concluded.
Well, now I don't know, what did we, we had, I think it was a three-hour session last time, so it would have been.
It could have been longer, if we had to.
Yeah.
But, yeah, forty-five, forty-five, so an hour, an hour for each one, total, and then another hour.
Maybe take a half an hour, maybe twenty, just in case we run over, or?
I don't think we need a half hour in between, no.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
A three total, maybe.
So you want to start directly at three then, or?
Oh, we can end early.
Maybe three fifteen start first one, does that make sense?
Oh, get here at three, and then start at three fifteen.
Three fifteen and four fifteen.
Because tech to getting, getting Zoom going.
I will need a Zoom.
That's right.
That's right.
This is next Tuesday?
On Tuesday, and presumably, I mean, GR could probably be here in person, but I don't know about HYA.
I think last time they did a tech presentation and Dr. Hager was here online.
That's true.
Yes.
And Rob was here too.
Yeah, yeah. And the other two were all virtual.
We had some technical issues, not necessarily on our part, but that definitely is an issue.
It is.
Yeah.
You know, if that doesn't work out, that's unfortunate. So fifteen minutes of cushion may be helpful, too.
Oh, that's true, yeah, the technical glitches.
That's, that's a good point.
The North Shore gremlins showed up.
They happen, right?
Three, first interview starts at three fifteen, forty-five minutes for presentation, fifteen minutes for Q and A. Or do we need, so do we need another fifteen for the, to set up for the second one?
Well, we can Q and A while they set up.
Get in, get in the waiting room, right?
True, that's true. Yeah, okay, okay. So second interview at four fifteen, we're done by five fifteen, and then here by? Five thirty, five forty-five, and then we vote on the fourteenth, which is following Monday.
It is.
Yes, okay.
Perfect.
I think that'll do us.
Awesome.
Is there something I've forgotten? I will compound it on your doors?
Okay.
Or your email.
So let me ask about the questions. Are we thinking, again, that everybody would take a question and ask the firms the same question? It's how we did it last time.
I thought, I thought that worked well.
Yeah, so did I.
I liked that, actually.
Yeah, so if we each pick one question that we want asked, we'll go around and then make sure we ask the same questions of, of both firms.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, good point. I thought that worked well.
Yeah, me too, me too. Okay, anything else? We've got references being called, we have other references we could reach out to if we so desire in our spare time? From Hawaii?
No.
Maybe not. Okay, all right, we are good, in which case I'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you for so much.